Good evening and welcome to the regular town council meeting of August 12th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. It is now actually 6:22 PM. I will call the meeting to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And I would ask that we take a brief moment of silence to reflect on the events going on both near and abroad. Thank you. In accordance with Mass General Law, this meeting is being recorded by LCAT. And if there's anyone else in the audience recording, if you could identify yourself. Seeing none, public comments. Anyone in the audience that wishes to make public comments? I see no one physically and no one's raising their hand on Zoom, so we will continue. Council comments. Do any councilors have a comment this evening?
I just want to say, great job kind of running another special meeting like this. I know we did this last year, so I thought it was, you know.
Thank you. Yeah, it's funny how we went like eight years of the council's tenure, having never had to do it.
Yes, sir. Chair, I'd just like to say, procedure you put together was very well done and I appreciate it. It made life a lot easier. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you all. And just for the public audience, especially if you're watching remotely and weren't, since the last hour, the, we had a joint meeting with the school committee and the town council to fill the school committee vacancy. And Carrie Jarzabski was nominated and appointed as the. My council comment would just be to say thank you to the Health Department for a successful hazardous waste day. A few weeks ago, I participated in that and finally got rid of a lot of stuff we've been collecting for 20 years.
So.
But it was nice to have something like that, that you could safely get rid of that. And it was very easy and convenient. So thank you to them. Town manager report. Hi, Tom.
Hey, good evening. You guys are in like mid-stride right now. Um, so yeah, good evening. Um, as usual, first we'll start with attached find project reports for the weeks of June 30th, July 7th, July 14th, July 21st and July 28th for the high school and auditorium. Obviously, week to week, when you see the progress, it's, it's really staggering and sort of a testament of how much hard work is going on in a given week on, onsite. Especially when you stack up five reports like this and see what's happening over more than a month. So in a few short weeks, we'll, we'll, the final year of classes will begin at Islam Meadow High School. We'll call it the Swan Song for, for a building that has educated students of Islam Meadows since the 1961. Quick fiber update, only because we had a meeting last week, I'm updating. There's not much to update. We're, we're very, very close with our, we've been waiting for make-ready work estimates from the utility companies, which are almost done to the point where a bunch of the batches have already been reviewed by Westfield and questioned certain things that were listed as needed to be done that they disagreed with. And upon further inspection, they came off that estimate because there was a mistake made one way or the other. So we're, we're really close to, to having those completed, probably the end of this month or early September. And then we'll get to work on a sort of a rollout plan. You know, based on those, those estimates and what the project cost is going to be, we'll, we'll have it phased out so that we can start to build and start to collect some revenue as we continue to build. I recently sent a letter of support on behalf of the town for House Bill 2330, an act relative to regional equity. This legislation would reform the governance of the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission, who we get our water from and send our sewer to, and ensure the voices of all ratepayers and communities are finally heard. Some key reforms would be shared governance, creation of an advisory board of local chief executives of the communities that Springfield Water and Sewer serves, and transparency and public accountability. So thank you to Rap Aaron Saunders, 7th Hampton District, Michael J. Finn of the 6th Hampton District, Mike Connolly of 26th Middle Sec. District, and Kelly Pease of the 4th Hampton District for sponsoring this legislation. And obviously there'll be updates and we'll see where that goes. The town recently employed the Services of Human Resources Services Incorporated to perform a compensation and classification study. Undertaking was shaped by our collective interest in understanding and comparing existing compensation to surrounding municipal labor market and ensuring our own internal equity. Important, this is an important step to evaluate our compensation program to ensure we can effectively attract and more aptly retain our high caliber talent. We expect the final report and implementation plan in the coming days, which we do now have. And Audra and Rebecca and I are sort of sifting through that now and we'll have some sort of plan. Obviously, we put some money in the budget for, in, in advance of what we thought was coming from this. So, but we'll have that conversation before, before we implement. Probably this September. It looks like September is going to be busy already, as it usually is. Uh, August 5th, the Islam Meadow Fire and Police Department hosted a Public Safety Open House at the fire station. I had mentioned this last meeting, you know, because of the high school construction and the, the traditional national night out kind of got lessened to just an open house at the fire station. Food and games demonstrations. The event was really well attended. Thanks to Westcom Regional Dispatch, who was there as well, the Hampton County Sheriff's Office, Massachusetts Department of Fire Services and the State Fire Marshal John Daven. The Health Department recently conducted the aforementioned Hazardous Waste Day on July 19th at the fire station. Trident Environmental Group disposed of waste from 138 residents, consisting of everything from propane tanks to lithium batteries and some mystery liquids that I dropped off from my late uncle's garage. The next event due to demand is already scheduled, but it's August 22nd of 2026. And then I realize these are hard to schedule. There are a lot of planning actually goes into the event. It's not sort of an open house drive-through. There has to be enough staff onsite to collect registrants. And that's why we required you to sign up before the event. So they have to get an idea of how much equipment they're going to need to take, how many cars are going to show up. So, but I just want to remind everybody that we do have the ongoing relationship with NEDT and Westfield. All you have to do is show that you are a resident of Islam Meadow and you can drop everything off there in the same fashion. So, um, we have some upcoming events, Coffee with the Town Manager, September 3rd. The Little E, September 5th here at 10:00 AM at the COA. They do a little biggie. They call it the Little E. It's been really popular the last couple of years. So that's September 5th again at 10:00 AM. Another recycling event, September 13th. This one got moved to Birchland. They had it at the high school last year. Obviously, we're, we're moving it to Birchland because of the construction. This is more bulk waste kind of stuff. A lot of the things that have, I didn't have a flyer, Tammy emailed it to me right before the meeting, so I'll get that, we'll get that out posted. That's not till September 13th. There'll be some monetary contribution on some of the items similar to our, our transfer station. Celebrate DL, September 27th at 10:00 AM at Center Field. That's always pretty well attended. Check that out. And Oktoberfest again, October 18th at noon at Brown Farm. I think this is our third annual. Always a very well-attended event up at Brown Farm. So that's my report for the evening, but I'm happy to answer any questions about anything I mentioned or did not.
Okay, Tom?
Yep.
Have any questions? Okay, none. Communications, Correspondence and Announcements. The first was just from the Health Department. They had put out a press release on July 29th, just saying that West Nile virus found in Islam Meadow as well as some other communities in Western and Central Mass. So just be cognizant of that. There are some things you can do to protect yourself, but there's more information on the town website and also mass.gov if you're interested. Then I had also attended an MMA webinar last week with some municipal legal updates from summer 2025. There were a few different things. Some was related to like land court rulings around tax title takings and calculation of interest, which I am sure that our collector and treasurer will more than happily follow that. There was some of interest to us, though. Cannabis law and policy was heavily discussed, especially around that social and equity component. That was one of the reasons that we couldn't get the ballot question on this past June. There's also a number of rules that municipalities actually have to follow when they do want to enable it even after it's allowed within their community. So something newer that I, at least I didn't know about was that you have to post all of the information on your town website, all of the rules, regulations, forms, et cetera. All has to be on one page that an applicant could go through and follow. You can't just have everything scattered around, which was news to me. But then there were also some new topics around delivery and social consumption, since those have been recently allowed at the state level. So something interesting, if we were to allow it to inspire how that impacts. Then there was also some discussion around ADU bylaws, especially now that the state had finalized their regulations or almost completely finalized them. And so the Attorney General's Office has been rejecting a lot, at least in part of the language that had been submitted to them, if not outright rejecting the entire bylaw that communities have been enacting. There was some helpful information, though, that you can't enforce parking requirements if it says like at least one. That's in violation of the new regulations that they've put out. And you also can't be more restrictive than your other residential zones as well. That was most of what we talked about. There were a lot more details about some of that and places we could find some more information, but stuff that I'm sure will be in the forefront of our mind when we get to those topics over the coming months. And then our next communication was the digital equity plan. I don't know, you or Rebecca?
Yeah, Rebecca, certainly. I know when I'm not supposed to fumble through stuff. It was informational, but I'll let Rebecca take over.
Hi, Rebecca.
Thank you. So we had applied last year for a digital equity planning grant. And we were assigned through Massachusetts Broadband Institute Consultants. And the consultant worked with us over the past year and about 15 or so community stakeholders to develop this digital equity plan. The main motivation for going after the grant was to help the town figure out how to most effectively transition residents onto the municipal fiber system, because we expect that there will be a learning curve there. But as we started digging into the plan, many more features to work on emerged. So at the back of the report that they created, there's an action plan. We're presently going after our first implementation grant. And it's all about increasing digital, digital literacy, device access, and of course, access to affordable and reliable internet. I don't know if anyone had a chance to go through the report already, but if you did and wanted to ask questions, I'm, I'm of course happy to answer them. Otherwise, you can shoot me an email and we could talk it over that way.
Great. Does anyone have any questions at this time?
Just a comment.
Sure.
They did a great job on it. There is a ton of information in it. I actually only got through about half of it and I, I was very impressed with all the different statistics and all, and a lot of things I would have never thought about, so.
Yeah, and I'll just also point out one thing that emerged that was also like a bit unforeseen. It's starting to, what do I want to say, reconfigure or fortify the relationship that we have with the Housing Authority, because that is a population, or the Housing Authority serving a population that's a little bit different than the, the rest of the community. And so we're able to do some interviews there and find out what their needs were and hopefully create some more programming access for those residents or our town.
Right. Yeah, I would echo the sentiment too, that that was well put together and very thorough. So thank you for your hard work and the committee's work.
Yeah.
Thanks. Great, thank you. Sorry, Kathy.
I'm babbling away and I'm muted. I, Rebecca, I just wanted to echo my interest or pleasure when I read that report. As Ralph said, that not only are there things that we need to know moving forward, but there was things in there I hadn't considered before. And, and one of them was what you said, that there is a hidden gem here in, in the Housing Authority, in that population, who very much wants to be, you know, computer savvy and have access. So to me, that's an unintended benefit. And I think the report was nicely done.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. We have no public hearings this evening, so under orders of the day, licensing matters. Our first is to approve a change of manager for AMG Retail, one LLC doing business as Atlantis Fresh Market. Good evening.
Good evening. Alexander Hogan, representing AMG Retail, one LLC doing business as Atlantis Fresh Market at 227 Shaker Road here in East Long Meadow. This is a application for change of manager for Ms. Rebecca Dempsey. She has been the current liquor license manager over in Springfield, so she's got ample experience. She's been doing that since 2021, I believe. So just the managers are switching locations. Ms. Dempsey will be working approximately 55 hours per week and is TIPS certified, so we're available for any questions you might have.
Great. Does anyone have any questions?
Have there ever been any issues with serving of the, you know, purchasing alcohol or having it there at, at the Atlantis? I mean.
At this particular location, not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great. If there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second. He was quick.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the change of manager application from AMG Retail, one LLC, LLC DBA Atlantis Fresh Market, 227 Shaker Road from Stacy, or into Rebecca Dempsey.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Jim?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good night.
Congrats.
Thanks.
Next, we have approval of a one-day liquor license for a wedding at the Norcross House.
I make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for Kimberly Wilson for a wedding at the Norcross House, 89 Maple Street for August 30th, 2025, 4 to 10:00 PM.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. Is there any further discussion? None? Jim?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
John? And Kathy?
Yes.
Motion passes. And then we have another one-day liquor license for the St. Michael Players.
Excuse me, Connor?
Oh, sure.
There's an error on the agenda. It should not be handbook bingo. It should be handbag bingo.
Handbag.
Fun.
Yeah. Yeah, that is way more fun.
We apologize.
Okay. For the St. Michael's Player for handbag bingo.
I make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for St. Michael's Players, 53 Summers Road, for handbag bingo for September 6th, 2025, 5 to 10:00 PM.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Jim?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, next, under Financial Matters, we have the Fiscal Year 25 End Year Report.
There can't be any questions.
Well, I, I said it last month in my report, so I'll start with a big thanks to the whole finance department. This is a lot of work closing the, the year, chasing down invoices and encumbrances and you know, obviously thanks to our department heads who do a great job also. But compiling all this and putting in the, in this form, so we can see it all broken down the way that we can discuss it. I just want to say thanks to the, to the whole department, because they, they, they really do an amazing job. So as usual, Kim has every piece of information you could possibly want on a spreadsheet to the point that we can't understand it. I think she does that on purpose.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
There are, there are wonderful explanations, which we've talked about in, in, in the past year. You know, obviously we do it during the budget too, when there's that change in the numbers. This is the reason for it. This is the amount. And so obviously there's the transfers, the turnbacks, and then the explanation for that turnback. You know, most of them were, were salary turnbacks. We had a lot of new hires. We had a lot of vacancies for a number of time. And obviously, everybody's budget is based on sort of full staff for a full year. And so a lot of those, I think the biggest one was probably health insurance again, which was considerably lower than the turnback last year, because we, we sort of changed that number and dialed it back a little bit. And, and again, yes, it, it seems like a large sum of money, but we, we are estimating conservatively that that everyone that we hire or most of the people that we hire will take the insurance. And, and we really have to, we have to plan for that, because we offer it. And then, you know, I don't know if anybody had any particular questions. The turnback number in total is two and a half million dollars or just over that, which again is sort of a testament of fiscal spending and not spending money just because it's in the budget for the most part. And, and the spots that look like we could do a little more work, those notes are, and that's why Kim put the FY26 budget all the way to the right, that we have sort of lessened those budgets based on, if we're seeing a trend over year to year, that this, we're just budgeting too much. We've tried to remedy that in years to come. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions, if you want to go through every account. I don't know how you want to handle the, it would be a lot easier if Kim wasn't on vacation. She would just take it over. But I, whatever your pleasure is, I'm happy to go through the whole thing if you want.
If it's all right with you, maybe I could just quickly read the email that she sent to you and I, just to give a brief summary. And then if there's other things, we can go from there.
Sure.
So she had sent, when she provided the spreadsheet to us, that encumbrances are up 263,000 in fiscal year 25 compared with FY25. I feel like that might be a mistake. Contributing factors are the $55,000 settlement in the town manager budget, 17,000 in legal fees, the 193,000 increase in encumbrances for the school, likely related to special education, and 95,000 in DPW encumbrances that were paid July 3rd shortly after year end. Turnbacks have been reduced in fiscal year 25 compared with FY24 by 338,000. This is primarily due to reduction of 550,000 in health insurance turnbacks, resulting from reducing the budget in FY25 to fall more in line with actuals. A budgeting process utilized in FY26 as well. In addition to the reduction in turnbacks, FY26 budgets were reviewed detailed compared to historicals and 300,000 in reductions were made, which are detailed on the bottom of the attached spreadsheet. Many of the turnbacks are related to department head positions that were vacant or filled at a lower-than-budgeted salary and overtime and quin bill payments not made in the police department. The DPW continues to have higher turnbacks, but we did make FY26 budget reductions for their departments about this.
And, and again, the, the DPW reasoning is the same as last year, which was they've had a difficult time getting to full staff. And so that not only impacts the salary line item, but all the materials aren't getting used because there's nobody to do the work. So it's sort of a double-edged sword there. But again, we did make significant adjustments to those budgets in FY26 so that we're not, again, this is that delicate balance of making sure we have enough money to operate the town, but not overtaxing the community for a whole year. So again, we, we tweak it from year to year. We're watching the trends. We make adjustments as we need to make them. And sort of this is, and again, we're hoping that this number, while we can tweak it to a nice, happy medium, is, is always turning back something, because that means we're not spending when we shouldn't be. And that's something that we've sort of instilled in everyone, that we're only spending money on what we need. Right? We're not spending on money on what we want. And so that, that hopefully we continue to turn back from a budget. So we're not, we don't have to spend everything we budget for if we don't actually need to. And if we continue to get grants at the clip we're getting them, we're always gonna save our budget from what, what we budgeted for.
Does anyone have any specific questions?
I, I just one, Connor, please. So the, the turnbacks, if I, I assume I understand this correctly, will now revert into the general fund and, or not general fund, the free cash and get certified in the fall.
Correct.
Okay. The second question is, it sounds to me like an unfortunate theme or a struggle for Bruce Finney to always have a full complement of workers to get the job done. Is there a factor that can be pointed to? Are, are the salaries competitive enough? Which i- if the answer is no, obviously that means that has to be reviewed. Or is it just the nature of the workforce right now or things that we can't control?
I would say a little of both, Kath. Mainly in the building facilities division. And that is because it's impossible for us to pay, for instance, a plumber, what a plumber would make.
Correct, correct, right, right.
So that, I use that, I use that example because we don't have a plumber and we haven't for a year and a half. And so it is difficult to not budget for a position that if we did get one, we'd need, and we'd have plenty of work to do. So that hole has been there now for a, a, a budget cycle and a half. As, as the materials to do the work.
And, and that's an unfortunate situation that I'm sure more than not municipalities are backed into. But when it comes to necessary plumbing inspections and such, do you have to reach out to adjoining commi- communities to get a helping hand or?
Well, so we, we still have, we have our plumbing inspector on staff.
Yeah, so that's distinctly different than an in-house plumber. Yes, I get that.
And I think like I, I or you would do at your house, if there's certain plumbing things that you might be able to go to Rockies and do, our building facility staff and our.
Does that, right.
Yeah, they can do some of that stuff. And then we would just hire a contractor for, for a job that we couldn't handle in-house.
It does. It absolutely does. I was just curious about, it's a tough situation for small towns to be in.
Well, right. And some, some positions tougher than others, I think. You know, I would say plumber, electrician would be, those, those two would be. plumber, electrician would be those, those two would be, um, they're they're difficult to to fill specifically.
Correct. Thank you.
Yep.
I have a couple of questions. So one is just a comment. I I know, um, other towns are having issues as far as getting, um, some tradespeople, plumbers, electricians. Um, and I know a few of them have decided to outsource it basically and have like, uh, three uh companies on hand that they vetted that that basically can do contract work, and we may have to switch to that if we can't find someone to work full time.
And and that conversation is is upon us at this point. Uh, it's similar to what we, we don't really have a HVAC tech on staff. You know, in a perfect world, that would be a position that we would add. So we have to do that. We have to have people on s- on sort of standby for us that we sort of pull off.
No, Ralph, if you're still working, go ahead.
My question, um, under the town manager, the fifty five thousand, was that?
Yes.
The legal, yeah.
That that was the legal. I thought that.
Yes.
Just out of free cash and not out of your department.
We can't pay bills out of free cash. It has to get transferred into something.
Okay, well, that makes sense then.
It does.
Yes. And the only other thing I would say is the turnback looked very similar to last year, a few hundred thousand different. Like I said, I I commend the departments. Um, I know, um, I believe our department turned back, what, thirty two cents, uh, the town clerk.
Every penny helps.
That's cutting like a postage stamp in half.
That's Jackie.
Again, some departments run extremely lean, and we have to be cognizant that, you know what, there's going to be some times that departments aren't going to have the funding that we need to transfer in. But when there's a department that, you know, was hoping to add on this software, that software, like IT, and they weren't able to, and they're able to turn the money back, um, it doesn't mean that we're not going to fund them next year or fund them at a lower rate. Um, I mean, we appreciate, you know, them doing everything they can, so.
Yeah, it's a collective effort, and it's 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 running great.
So if I can extend it, I'll be Ralph Junior tonight. Just just trying to think outside the box, could if another local town were in the same boat we are, trying to hire a a tradesperson that's gonna beg a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand salary, could we co-employ? Could we cost share with a a Hamden or a Wilberham if is that a scenario worth pursuing or are there inherent drawbacks?
Yeah, no, uh, that that conversation, I dare say, is already being had with a different position that I just found about the this morning. Uh, I think we're gonna start to see a lot of uh departments head the way that we had headed for Westcom, for instance. There's, there's a lot more regionalization on everyone's mind. Costs are up. And even the the governor and some of these, the municipal empowerment act has sort of earmarked some particular departments that are 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 having a hard time filling, uh, allowing these departments to become regionalized that perhaps weren't before. So, yes, uh, that conversation will is and is going to be had in the future for sure.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? I just want to commend Kim and her team as well for putting together all that information. It was, as you said, a lot of detail.
Yeah, always.
Next, under financial matters, we had approving the ratification of firefighters local two four two six contract. Turn it over to you, Tom, if you want to provide a brief update on how those negotiations turned out.
Yeah, so, um, the, uh, oh, let me just pull this up here. Yeah, so we, um, started negotiations back in December or January, I believe, with, um, the fire department union. Myself, Rebecca, Chief Peter, uh, and, um, Audra, uh, as well as Chris French, who's the union president. Jim, geez, I can't remember anybody's name now. Well, I guess, um, now I'm embarrassed. Sorry, Jim. Uh, we, we had, uh, very good negotiations. I think, uh, we, I guess I'm gonna get in trouble for saying this, but, uh, left the lawyers out of the room, um, and had a, uh, productive conversation about, uh, the town of East Sun Meadow and the town of East Sun Meadow Fire Department and what both parties could do to help both succeed. Um, and this, uh, negotiation, uh, was, I mean, just outstanding, uh, in terms of, uh, give and take from both sides in terms of what could be done, uh, to make everyone happy. The the fire department union, uh, voted to ratify this, uh, last month unanimously. Um, and we felt the same on our side of the table. Um, this was a fantastic, uh, negotiation. It's sort of a testament to the character of, um, the men and women of the East Sun Meadow Fire Department. And and I'm I'm happy to present it to you. Um, like I said, it has my full blessing uh, as well as everybody else on our negotiating team. Uh, and it was eventually looked over by the lawyers, and it's all good. And so, uh, Jim Goldrick, sorry, Jim, I'm so mad right now. Brody Allen, um, and Christian Santanello. So, um, again, uh, if you have any questions about the specifics, you know, we we the the highlights are, um, we brought the COLAs back down to two percent, which is sort of an effort to get in line with where where our non-union staff is. Um, and that will be an effort. COLA is not, uh, necessarily anything other than a cost of living adjustment, and in my mind, it should be the same for everyone. So, uh, there were some, uh, changes to their pay structure that got them in line with surrounding communities. Uh, we were lacking in that area, um, and the biggest of which, um, was the introduction of four lieutenant positions, one for each shift. Currently, we have four groups, uh, with a captain and an acting captain when need be. This is, this rank structure is more in line with a department of our size, so that we have two officers on each shift. And, uh, sort of extending, um, the operation from an official standpoint. Um, so, like I said, um, the contract was was negotiated very well by both sides and, you know, like I said, I I I appreciate your blessing on on signing it on behalf of the town.
And I think just for everyone's awareness, based off of what we had, um, discussed, so tonight we would authorize the town manager to sign the ratification, but knowing that once free cash is certified sometime in September, so it'll probably be the first meeting in October or so, it would then have to make a free cash transfer to fund the balance out of.
Correct.
Contract, which I think for total fire, you had said was forty eight thousand six hundred seventy five dollars, and ambulance was fourteen thousand seven hundred seventy one.
Right, yep. And and, uh, again, seeing that front loaded number, the the negotiations sort of spun to, we'll have less of a increase in year two than we sort of would have had with the existing contract, if if you catch my drift. Um, so there's a little bit of a bump in in the year one because of the new positions, and then, uh, we'll we'll sort of level out to where we would have been with the existing contract, so.
Any questions?
Did we actually receive a copy of the contract? Because I couldn't find it anywhere.
No, we will.
Thought it was part of the packet.
Red line and clean copy.
What?
Red line and the clean copy should have been sent to you.
No.
I did, I didn't see it.
There's nothing in here. And I'm trying to ratify it as presented, and I'm like, I must have just missed it.
No, you didn't. No, you didn't.
I just sent you the the email and not the attachments.
I don't even think I saw.
I got fifteen attachments, but none of them had to do with.
Yeah, I don't think there was.
Nothing in it either.
Contract for the fire.
Yeah, I think you're right.
This one was the first. I think Jeannie's always.
Oh, I thought you meant it was the first. I was correct. I I truthfully, I have no issues ratifying it based on, uh, the discussion we just had.
The numbers.
And the numbers.
Yeah. And if it's any confidence, I did read through the redlined, and there really wasn't, aside from what Tom said, the positions, there were a couple wording changes, like removing professional in front of firefighters to be inclusive of the people on the ambulance and so forth, but really wasn't much else.
So I also think recently, didn't we, um, on the police department side, um, made sure there was a sergeant and um, each shift, and I think that's what you were just saying here with.
Yeah, just from an operational.
From an operational point of view, so we've already done it with them, and it makes sense.
I sent it, and I apologize for that. I missed that.
Other questions? Okay, if there's none, I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to authorize the town manager to sign the ratification of the agreement for firefighters local two four two six as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded and thirded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Kathy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Anna?
Yes.
And Jim?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
And thank you to the firefighter. Everyone in the fire station for their assistance on that. Next, we have approval of Finitz's motion.
Your motion to approve to July eighth, twenty twenty five, open session minutes.
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Kathy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Anna?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, old business. We have a discussion with Christina Vera about relational marijuana ballot question. I know.
It was so sober.
No.
Seriously, Jeff isn't here. He's doing cheerleading and football drop offs and he is, um, listening, but I am, um, here for both of us to seeing, um, where we kind of stand on having this put on the ballot for next year. And if there's any other processes we have to do to make sure that it's smooth, uh, for next year.
Great. Well, thank you for coming again. I know it's flown by. I know we've all had a busy summer. Uh, so I did some research, and just to recap, the last time we discussed this was at our May thirteenth meeting, which is hard to believe long ago that was. We started off the discussion at that meeting with a consensus to gather signatures and submit it as a new citizen petition for a new ballot question for the June second, twenty twenty six ballot and election. Um, but then as the discussion progressed, there was a question about could the council just put the question on the ballot without having to gather new signatures as a yes/no question? But then the voters would still have the opportunity to weigh in on the discussion. So unless Jeannie has something further or different, we didn't seek legal opinion on the topic yet without consensus from the council, whether we should proceed with that. But from my research, as the council, we could put any sort of non-binding public opinion question we want on the ballot as a yes/no, but even if folks voted no or yes, it doesn't mean that the council would have to follow that same uh voter response or whatever bylaw change we would entertain. There's so many different rules about putting binding measures on the ballot, and I'm personally unclear about whether this sort of marijuana question, whether we could just jump the process since it was originally a citizen petition, or if it has to follow the citizen petition process, because there's all sorts of rules in Master General Law, chapter forty-three, about what we even can't do around that. Like, we can do that binding question wise when we did things like the debt exclusion for the high school, because that's expressly carved out in the lane for the legislative body to do that. But it's not so clear to me, not being a lawyer, whether we can do that for things that don't have an exact path in state law. So as I see it, we have three choices. We could either just do it, given that the legal advice back in May was that we actually didn't have to put it on the ballot, but the council, as a consensus, wanted it on the ballot to gauge public interest. We could just do it as a non-binding question, knowing that we would want to follow whatever the public's interest was, but we don't have to necessarily figure out what the path to make it a binding question is. We could try to go down the path of binding question, but we would have to seek legal counsel and figure out what that might entail. Or we could go back and say, sorry, follow the citizen petition process and gather all the required signatures, and then there's no question about what the council could or couldn't do. Those are the three avenues I came up with, but I'm open to whichever way we wish, uh, to suggest.
So if we did, um, requested them to receive the signatures to put it on the ballot, Jeannie, how many signatures?
Is required? If it was the same process as last time?
Five hundred.
Fifty at first. Then it has to be in proper form, and that's what they did the first time. And our attorney said it was not in proper form because of so many reasons.
Ultimately, so after the fifty, then they have to get another fifty, is it?
The first ten signers have to go out and get.
Fifty more.
Fifty more, at least.
So it's.
Ten, so it'd be five hundred.
Oh, each, each of it.
And for signers, they'd be part of the.
And ultimately, it comes up to five hundred signatures. Having gone out and gotten signatures, even getting fifty to get on the ballot can be daunting.
Does that legislature that you just reviewed change any of that?
I'm not sure. There was so much to that chap.
My head was spinning when you were talking about it.
The details and everything in Master General Law, there's so many exceptions that I just wasn't sure what things fell into. I don't want to make it more complicated for.
Right.
Christina, especially if it ended up being like five hundred signatures when you compound everything. So if everyone was okay with it, I'm okay with it being a non-binding question, knowing that we would probably follow whatever the interest of the voters were anyway.
Really sure. What was the, um, how many signatures did you gather before? Was it, was it just the fifty?
It was fifty-two because we were trying to rush and get it because we felt like so quickly. So we were able to get those. I mean, I, you know, we have ten months, so I'm sure we, you know, it was needed, we could that process moving. That's why I wanted to just make sure we were keeping the temperature, so we would have the time to make sure um, we could follow whatever process was.
Mine I thought would be, you know, I think there's obviously an effort, and people in the town have already signed something to that effect. Fifty, you know, fifty people's not, you know, it's not like ten people or something. I I think it's, you know, a decent crowd. There's clearly some interest in, you know, relooking at this issue. I think a non-binding might be maybe the most cleanest because people would still have an opportunity, you know, if they wanted to continue the status quo and not change the process. And it would give us, if if the town does decide to change course, then, you know, we would be able to construct, you know, a a a pretty thorough bylaw as would be needed. Whereas I I'd I'd have to look into it more, but I feel like the binding, I would hate for a situation where, and we just had this a few weeks ago, where if it's not written, I think in a way, if it's confusing and we, but we have to write it in such a way, I'd be concerned, whereas I get the sense maybe non-binding, there's certain rules that aren't there compared to a binding resolution. So I think clearly there's some interest in it. I think clearly there's some interest in it. We might have different opinions on whether we would want to actually see it happen, but I think. You know, I want to at least get the public's perspective. Like I would definitely, I would not want to do this. Um. You know, just just with us. I'd want to get that non-binding. You know, but I I'd be also open to a binding process as well, depending on what the rest of you guys feel.
And I think a part that I left out mistakenly was um. I think part of the reason why our charter said that the any ballot question had to have the bylaw language. In that proper form was because when things are a binding question, unlike the council being the one to. Adopt things, even though we may still go through the process ourself, that binding question makes that bylaw language immediately in effect. Whereas with the non-binding question, we would still have the opportunity to tailor that. Specific bylaw language if there's parts that are inconsistent or maybe need some tweaks.
And we would still get that public opinion that we would have gotten from a binding question.
Yeah, because then it's also unclear to me, even if we took it a step further, even if the binding question process happened. If we then found we wanted to revise part of that, not to prohibit it again, but maybe there's certain. Rules or changes we wanted to make. Well, since the whole thing was enacted as a binding question, is that totally off limits to the council? In the future, as far as edits.
And from the men history of marijuana legalization in the state, the medical marijuana ballot question that was passed, I think in twenty twelve, the legislate, they had to go back to the legislature to fix it. Because there was problems in that and obviously the voters implemented that specific um medical marijuana bill. So they had to go back and, you know, adjust things.
So my only thought on this is if it's a non-binding question, then and let's say it passes. Then it falls onto the council and the planning board to create the language. Right? If it's a binding question, it will be created ahead of time in explicit form to be adopted. Um. And at what timeframe? I mean, yeah, we can say, yes, it's our intent to follow a non-binding question, but it could be two, three, five years, could be three months. Um.
We could try to, even if we did non-binding. Either in conjunction with or just at the same time, try to craft language in anticipation. Of that to have something it started in the process.
Much of that been done by uh attorney had passed it, so or he said it with the final edits, it would be. In form, so I guess you guys could kind of take that and craft it um how you wanted it. Just needed that sex social equity um part in there. So I think if you guys wanted. To put in effect and kind of edit it so it made sense how you wanted it, then you could and just sure the attorney would be, you know.
So a lot of it's already been crafted. Could just.
And so hopefully.
Run it by.
If we did that after the June second election, we could start. The first readings and public hearings with the planning board and, I mean, given the summer months, it may take. A little bit of time to get through that, but hopefully by the end of the summer, early September, it would be solidified. If we went that route.
Mm-hmm. I I think in this situation with this topic that it's probably best to get the.
Non-binding.
Well, non-binding, but the um. Residents take on it before we spend time, energy, money. So maybe we start with the non-binding and then if it's a dog, then.
Exactly.
And I don't think Christine's going to let us forget about it, so.
About it, you know, last thing.
Yeah. You know, going like five years out.
Good thing is if we have a commitment to it, you know, there's two seats up next year on the council, presumably there's going to be at least a bank of. Folks that are talking about it here will probably be here, you know, come next August.
Just a thought, we do it away where the. Bylaw draft would be ready so we can actually present that to the voters as in addition to the non-binding question, here's what the bylaw would actually look like.
Think I think a non-binding question, yes or no.
Yeah.
Question.
I don't know that we could put like bylaw language on there without it sounding like it's a binding question. We might be able to put something on the town website. Have the more information as to what we're talking about, but.
I think to keep it the most simple is the most information you give people, the more conflicts they get ironically.
That information on the website certainly would be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we could always share it too if it's on a certain site and they want to gather more information, we can say, you know, go to the town's website. It provides, you know, any changes or information. So they can educate themselves before, you know, the ballot.
Yeah, and then from your perspective, while you wouldn't have to worry then about trying to get five hundred or more signatures. It would still be in your interest, of course, to get people to be informed about the topic and show up on election day.
Like, because it's the vote that counts at the end, no matter how many people are saying yes or no. So, send.
So is that the general consensus we want to move forward with?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Thank you all.
All right.
Thank you.
Good one.
You too.
Okay, next we had an update on paving checks. So I know we had. Not too long ago, but longer than a couple of months ago, we had approved uh some free cash, I believe, for Tom to have the pavement management. Report updated. The last time we did it was somewhere around twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen, if my memory serves me right. I remember reading that report many a times on the Capitol Committee. Um, I don't want to steal all the thunder if Tom wants to dive into a summary of the report or.
Yeah, uh, well, quite frankly, I I'm still digesting it. I did meet with Bruce um this afternoon just to kind of briefly um. Look over it. Obviously, uh, when I sent it to you on Thursday or Friday, whenever that was, um, that was literally when we received it. Um. So I, you know, there's not a a whole surprise, a whole many bunch of surprises in there. Uh, obviously, the condition of our roadways has decreased. Since two thousand sixteen um. You know, to the tune of whatever a thirty million dollar backlog of pavement, uh, again, um. From, I think seventeen, the last report had seventeen million dollars. Now that's a function of our roads getting worse and prices.
Us.
Yeah. Costs going up. So um. We, Mark and Bruce and I are are set to meet uh next week to sort of solidify a a plan moving forward here with this new information. Again, we went from a seventy-six to a sixty-nine. Um. And again, we we certainly as a town didn't do anything from a funding standpoint. To hit these numbers and and again, it's going to be very difficult for us to. Come up with a plan of two point six million dollars a year or whatever it is to get up to eighty, uh, you know, from sixty-nine. Um, but I think we can certainly, there's things in here. Um, there's new technologies, there's new treatments. I think um. Mark and Bruce have been doing a great job of late. Um, instead of our uh old school sort of mill and overlay. Uh, which which, you know, is nice for a few years on the surface. Um, then you end up out on Westwood again ten years later. Um, which we are now. Now that's a new um relatively new. It's been around for a while, but we haven't done. Much of this and that's cold in place recycling, which is uh recycling the entire pavement base. And putting it back down all in one, right? And so the difficulty with that uh treatment is um there is a mixed design, so. They have to do the cores um and figure out what's there so that they know what to add to that mix to put it back down, so it's a good base. Um, so Westwood, I I I mean, I did paving for a while. Everyone's calling, oh, Westwood's great. That doesn't even have a surface course on it. That's just the base course that got recycled and put back down. Um, so.
And they love it.
And they love it. Yep. So now Westwood's a whole other story, but so um. You know, we we still have to digest all this new information. Uh, all it's really going to do is um. Sort of set us in a direction for what's next, right? This this is what these plans do. I think uh I'll probably have some sort of. Recommendation uh for capital again, but I think I'd like to get away from our. Uh, you know, like dollar amount thrown into an account and put actual projects. On the with actual dollar amounts. Um, there's certainly a lot of, I think we really. S- have to stick with our next couple of year plan, which is uh heavy tra- heavily trafficked roadways that could use some improvement right now. Uh, next year on the docket and they've already done the core sampling for Pleasant Street. Which is why it's been closed and the gas companies doing their work because they've been instructed. Uh, as every few years, we give them our pavement list or upcoming projects. And say, you you need to get your work done now before we pave, just like Maple Street, just like everywhere we go. Um, so Pleasant will be next year. Um, and again, I'd like to finish Parker Street. Uh, we had started that a few years ago and we haven't really got back to that and uh. Meadowbrook Road has been on the agenda for for a while, um, and that's in really rough shape. This is all in concert with Route eighty-three. Uh, Prospect, um, and obvi- obviously are huge plans for North Main Street. Um, so. We have quite a few things happening right now and I I'd venture a guess if we did, if we did this report again in two years. We'd be at a seventy-two and not a sixty-nine. Um, that's the sort of impact that tho- those mass D O T roadways are going to have on our entire system. Um, but uh as was a a goal last year for me that we sort of were waiting for this report to get, not to make excuses, but. Maybe to start uh really making an effort to. If we can't do the two point six, we got to get to one point eight or two point one or something um to get us headed back in the right direction here. Um, and again, we'll continue to um do our complete streets and our tip projects and um, you know. Keep asking uh DOT to. Chip in when they can. Um. Uh, there was one other bit of good news. We last I last meeting, I think, uh. We approved or you approved the chapter ninety funding at nine hundred and two thousand dollars, which was up considerably from. Our our normal, but we also have an additional supplemental uh from the Fair Share Act. Of two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and change. So uh I'm waiting for that letter so I can put it to you for for a vote to accept that as well, but. Uh, R F Y twenty-six apportionment is now something like one point two million dollars, um, which is. Almost double what we usually get. Um, so um, that that's really exciting that the that the state has sort of listened to all the communities in the Commonwealth. Um, again, these numbers don't mean much except for uh. Everyone's around a low seventy, like that is an average. Um, we're we're not like ridiculously bad. Um, but again, w- we need some help when we can get it, but we also have to start to make a commitment here about putting pay. Paying for our roadways. Um, and again, there's a lot that goes into it. And again, I'm not, I I I'm not trying to make excuses. Um. But we have our uh water asset management plan matrix, sewer asset management plan matrix, stormwater asset management plan. And our pavement, which is now updated. And we can't go paving roads that are set to have a water main replacement in two years. So we have to really make sure all these things are working together so that we don't have a situation where we're. Digging up a road that we just paved. That that obviously doesn't look good for anyone. So um. Once we digest this new information, um, again, like I said, Pleasant has already. Been started for next year and the fact that we're we're pulling those pavement cores to see what. We're dealing with and what that mixed design is going to look like. And that. Cost of the project I couldn't even give you right now, plus or minus a hundred thousand dollars, because a lot of it sort of depends on that pavement mix and what gets put back down. Um, but I will have that uh estimate for Pleasant Street probably in September and certainly for capital because. Um, when in all likelihood, this one point four or one point two, whatever we have. Um, plus what we have in the bank right now from other apportionments for roadway. Um, we should be able to do Pleasant Street with no problem and probably add another portion of one of these roadways that it makes sense to do. Uh, uh, sort of like a preventative maintenance or a structural improvement. Um. That could sort of better this whole plan. Um, so so that's sort of where where we're at um paving wise. Um, all obviously, all that stuff's underway that I mentioned a few months ago. Uh, Westwood, obviously under construction right now. I think Mark is dealing with some numbers for Harkness and um. Is that Anthony, the street behind Big Y and Tau's, something like this? Thanks. Um, so there there are a couple of things in the hopper now, but I think with the updated information, uh, now we can start to see. Uh, where these things are going to fall with the maintenance and how much those maintenance treatments cost, and we can start to sort of fit these into the plan a little bit better. I'm sure Ralph got through the whole report.
I was getting through it right.
Yeah, I will. My takeaways from it, I mean, one, I loved the amount of detail and information that was there. I read through every word and it was uh. Nice to see how much was in there. Um, I guess some summary information just for the benefit of. One in the public following along, so our town has a hundred one miles of roadway. And our average pavement condition index, which is P C I right now in twenty twenty-five is sixty-nine, but as Tom said, back in twenty seventeen, it was seventy-six. Um, the backlog of work, if we were to do absolutely everything right this second, is thirty million eighty-five thousand dollars, which is obviously un- unattainable. Uh, but just to maintain our current P C I of sixty-nine would require an investment of. One point six million dollars each year. That wouldn't improve the condition overall of the roadways. That would just keep our score the same.
Right.
But then. I thought it was interesting. I think the old reports touched on it a little, but not as much as the newer one did some of the other. Ways of doing things instead of just like you said, the, well, we wait till the road gets really bad and then we spend ten million dollars to. Bid and we only get two roads done in town a year. Um, so it could be an interesting way to, like you said, mix in. Some of the preventative maintenance that is significantly cheaper. And if we could make some of those repavement jobs last longer than deteriorating, that could be beneficial.
And again, I I'll I'll just say that. This was something that the one of my shortcomings when I was in that position, but Mark with Bruce's support has really, I mean, we we've already. Put a treatment on Maple Street, which we paved four years ago. That is something that this town never would have done for for decades. Um, once it got paved, that was that, right? Um, so I I think I think we're on to something here in terms of long-term. Maintenance of our roadways. It's just going to take sort of an influx of a big move to get. You know, if you if we really want to improve this number, um, we're we're going to have to do something big. At some point, like when we stop borrowing money for a high school, something like.
But I think to that end, we've obviously not enough to do a ton of things, but. Knowing how much we've turned back last year and now this year, there is an opportunity. This upcoming year to use some free cash if we thought it appropriate to do some of these projects, even if it's just. Do all of the maintenance so things stop getting worse.
Well, I think it really can't be stressed uh that the the added money in this budget from the Commonwealth. Um. This is something people have been screaming about since two thousand three, which was the last time they changed this formula and. Um, it's nice to see that the voices were heard and this was the the additional funding was added to this. Um. So so this is a a good a step in the right direction in terms of um sort of state aid, if you will.
I guess the only other thing I saw too, which was one of the questions I asked you the other day was um. The cost figure and knowing that that's kind of like the all-in projected cost for that stretch of roadway that we see in each of the table recommendations. At least I had always thought, you know, because a lot of the projects we had done in the past were getting close to that million dollars a mile threshold, that some of them aren't actually. That expensive anymore, depending on the proposed treatment. So that could mean that depending on how we. Slice and dice things, maybe we could get more done, but it's finding the right puzzle piece order.
Right, and and it and it's a little tricky too, because. You're using those numbers to come up with these segments of roadway that have been paved at different times, right? But if you only pave two hundred feet, you're not getting that price from a contractor. It's not going to come out and pave two hundred feet for that price, right? So it you have to sort of plan it out so that you're doing a couple of these things, even if they're different costs and different condition. even if they're different costs and different condition, you still do it. Right? Because that, you're going to get, the more tonnage, right? That you, you get, the lower that price per ton is going to be from the contractor. So there is a lot that goes into it. And so I think Bruce and Mark have, have us headed in the right direction. The new data is certainly going to help us sort of execute a better plan moving forward.
Any questions?
Just a quick comment. I think I like the part, and I think I'm understanding this correctly, the benefit. So obviously the benefit 447, that's a high benefit, right?
Yep.
So I like how it's rated that way. So you're kind of looking at this not only cost, but like, what's the benefit in it for the town?
Right.
You know, I, I, I thought that was.
No, and, and I think a lot goes into, a lot goes into what they're, what they're getting after here. And then also a lot goes into the reason that that number is there is because that is bringing down the road score unnecessarily.
Right.
Right? You can do this much and all of a sudden, this is a big impact. People are going to notice this.
Yeah. Like, does the report contemplate the grant money that we're getting for like Summers Road and North Main Street?
So it wouldn't, it would be a snapshot in time, right? So it, it wouldn't, this is what I was saying about the, the score would be higher if we did this next year when all those things are paved, right? So it doesn't, it can't forecast what we're going to do because we haven't done it. And that's not really.
So like, but the 30 million is actually not 30 million.
That's, that's really what I'm kind of, kind of asking. So I'm looking at Summers Road, it says, you know, base rehab, $1 million. You can almost take that out of the report at this point. So it's really not 30 million, it's 29 million.
Right. Well, and again, I, I guess I would say that sort of, I don't know how many segments they have the Summers Road in, probably a bunch, right? Six or seven?
Yeah.
So that will probably go a long way into, you know, they know what they're seeing when they look at a road too. And so they may not do base rehab everywhere. They may do mill and overlay. They may do base rehab in some of the spots that overlap, right? So it won't be apples to apples, but it'll be close. So it's a good point. All those numbers on Summers Road are, are pretty much going to go away with the exception of.
A 1.7 million.
Right. With another conversation with DOT, what they deem is what they want to do. Now we have this and we can say, well, I don't really want you to mill and overlay that. We just had a pavement survey done and it says we need base rehab. And this is why we did all that work ahead of time so that DOT wouldn't have to do it. So now when we say, hey, we want you to do this base here, like we have this thing, we already saved you $68,000 by doing all these structures already. They say, all right, that sounds good. This, this is, this is the conversation we're having with them now.
And then.
That's an excellent point, that, that we have a lot of work about to happen that is going to take this down considerably.
Right. And not just cost, but then when you look at that condition index score and you see some of those segments of some of these roads that will be paved in the, the coming months, that if those road segments now go to 100 of the score, well, the overall average hopefully should rise a little bit.
Yep. I think if you, if you look at, if you look at the map with the colors, the, the difficult thing to probably stomach, if you will, especially for the public is most of those are the side streets.
Right.
And it's going to be difficult to make the investment when we're in such a low traffic area. And, and that's, that's been a difficulty for, well, let's call it ever. And, and that's something that we're going to have to, we're going to have to have conversations about. And, and conversely, the public is going to have to be a little patient with our, when we get a chance to get to side streets compared to Summers Road and Parker Street. And this is just how it's going to be. And we'll have to wait for water main projects to happen and then we'll come and pave at that point.
But with that idea too, I think this was something Ralph had brought up in capital a couple of years ago. Maybe there's ways we need to relook and I don't even know if we can legally do it based off of the structure of the enterprise funds. But if we're going to do a water and sewer project and dig it up, can we tax some of the repaving costs onto the rates that?
And I would be lying if we haven't had that conversation a bunch of times already. Yeah, I mean, again, we're, we're, we're shifting the cost to the same people in a different fund. But the, the, it's a good thought. And the reason we keep having the conversation is you, you've seen what the, we make the gas company do, for instance, after they do it. They don't pave their trench. They pave more than their trench. And so it's not ridiculous for us to ask the water department to do the same. There, we could, this could be a policy shift. The previous town I worked for a million years ago, if you did a trench above a certain length, you had to do curb to curb replacement. That's not outlandish. And it doesn't necessarily kill a project for a utility company. So these are things that we're, we're having the conversations about and, and we're thinking about implementing any way we can to sort of help with our pavement restoration.
Great. Any other thoughts or questions?
Lots of information in here.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll be talking about it again.
Yes, no, I, I would assume that we, we will. September is busy enough. We might as well have an update in September.
We'll make that.
Well, it's tough to talk to residents when someone says, hey, my street's listed as one of the worst in town.
Right.
And you have to explain to them, like you said, well, it's a cul-de-sac and two of you use it. Whereas, you know, 10 points down is a, a side street that 400 people use a day. Which one do you do?
Right.
And the tough conversations and.
And the other hard part about that too, is sometimes people will point to surrounding communities. And I'm sure they do some of their streets correctly too. But sometimes you see the same towns repaving the same street every five or 10 years because they're doing the cheapo skin coat that doesn't last forever. And it's like, well, a lot of times we've been doing it the right way and it lasts a long time when we do it. It's just expensive and you can't do as many of those as frequently.
Yeah, that Maple Street, for example, we, we had to bank a whole year of Chapter 90 and put two years together just to do it the right way. And the, and it's frustrating and obviously the cost of things, it's no stranger to anyone when they try to do anything. When you say that it's expensive to pave, everyone knows that. I don't want to keep using that as an excuse though. We, we, we will, we have the information now and we will come up with a better plan to sort of get this headed in a different direction.
I do think looking forwards though, if Prospect Street is done, Summers Road's done, Westwood is done, it's going to alleviate.
Pleasant next year.
That's very, very noticeable in us. Very noticeable. And saying we don't do anything. Well, there's a lot of stuff.
A lot of people are.
North Main Street, Pleasant Street. Those are a lot of main roads and a lot of, lot of length of road that, that'll get done. So we're going to move in the right direction, but I do agree. We'll have to take a close look this year on capital projects and see if we can't get some extra in there.
Great. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, under new business, we had saying the review and recertification of the zoning bylaws from the Barrett Planning Group. Was that someone? Will?
Will Downey.
That is.
Yes. Okay.
We've already done our.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Hi, can everyone see me?
Do it.
Yes, we can. Hi, thank you. Sorry. I needed to have my, my permissions changed to a panelist. Um, so first of all, hello, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Will Downey. I am a senior planner with Barrett Planning Group. I'm joined here tonight by my colleague, Bob Mitchell, who some of you might know he's been planning for a while. He, he will, he will chime in and if, if and when he can. But my, our, our purpose here tonight is we just want to introduce the council a little bit to the work that we're doing with the, with the planning department. And we have a couple of questions for all of you to help us understand where the council's head is. Oh, and there's Bob, as I promised. On where the council's at and kind of just plumb, plumb you for a little bit of information as well, if that makes sense for everyone. So I'd like to first, just for a little bit of an overview, I'd like to direct your attention to the handout that we provided for everyone, which is titled East Long Meadow Comprehensive Zoning Review. Um, I, I know you've all probably seen this. I know you've all been here for a long time. So I don't want to walk through this point by point unless you would like to. But this outlines as we responded to in the town's request for quotes, the work that will be involved as part of this. Essentially, we are going to be doing a comprehensive review of the town zoning bylaw, particularly looking for ways that there are things that could be improved. Any ways that over time contradictions have entered into it? Any ways that, you know, as time goes on, you are, you have fallen out of compliance with state law or other laws like that? And other ways just to make your zoning, ways to make your zoning bylaw a little bit more user friendly, a little bit easier to use and highlight any ways that the needs of the community can be better accounted for in the zoning bylaw. And so that will be the focus of the first deliverable that comes from this work, which is a diagnostic, which will identify those areas, things like that. And then working with the Director of Planning and the Bylaw Review Committee, we will begin to take the recommendations from that diagnostic into any forms of recommended zoning changes that we would submit to, that we submit to the town in our final report. And the final report would include the revised and the complete diagnostic, along with a summary of all the public events that will be happening over the course of this project, along with any of those redlining, recommended zoning, zoning amendments for the planning board and ultimately yourselves in town meeting to bring. And as, those are the deliverables and this will also be supported by a public engagement. We, the original RFP asked for two community meetings, the first of which would introduce the project and present on the result, uh, would introduce the project to the public and the, and stakeholders in town. The second would present the findings from the diagnostic and the recommendations to kind of introduce that to the public, follow up on that and get some sense of where the public's at in relation to our recommendations. And we will also be meeting at least twice with the Bylaw Review Subcommittee. First to present them with the findings of the diagnostic and again, to present the findings and recommendations. So it's a mix of both working with town bodies that work, that work with the bylaw and the general public to get a sense of where people are at, get input, get input and have an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts on this. Where we're at right now is we are in the middle of the diagnostic review. And we are also meeting with various, what we like to call stakeholders, which are people that have been with input from the, from the planning department. People that have, that are familiar with the town's bylaws, working under them, people that are familiar with some of the needs of the community to help us understand essentially what's going right with the town's bylaw, what's going wrong and areas that they, that people that work with this all the time have seen maybe needs for improvement or ways that things could be, uh, could be handled differently. And so that's where we are right now. Um, I know that was a little bit of a fast overview, but um, I'm, as my first kind of question, I'm happy to answer any, Bob and I are happy to answer any questions that the council might have relating to the overall project or anything as identified in the, in the scope handout.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to add one thing. The process going forward will have kind of two tracks that overlap. So one of the tracks is the organization of the bylaw, the numbering of the bylaw, the language, grammar, punctuation, conflicting language. Are things located in the right sections or are they scattered all over the place? Do we, are there sections of the bylaw or subsections of the bylaw that are in conflict with state law or state court decisions? Kind of quote unquote, not so substantial issues, although there are substantial issues. The parallel track, and again, these overlap, is as we go through this, we hear from all the towns that we work with, while section 6.2, whatever that section is, doesn't work and nobody has, nobody can easily understand it, really needs to be rewritten. That's a substantive issue. Or we're missing an entire topic that we want to put into the bylaw. That's a substantive issue. So we will develop a list of the substantive issues as we go along. And we'll work with the town this, for them, the town folks to put their ideas on the substantive list. And then, okay, what are the priorities of the substantive list? Can we do, I mean, you know, I don't know, if there's three substantive topics and then all of the recertification, we could probably do that under the budget. But if there's 30 substantive issues, that's not going to happen under the budget. So there's a prioritization that goes through this as well. And that's kind of how you end up at the end with a bylaw that's organizationally well put together, easier to navigate, easier to find things, easier to understand, correct English grammatical punctuation, language, as well as substantive changes that the town's looking to. That's it.
That's all.
That's it?
Yeah, no, it's, if you break it down by checklist, it's actually only three or four checks on that checklist. Um, but yeah, so I guess the, uh, with, with, with Bob's clarification, extra detail, does, does the council have any questions for us before we kind of pick a little bit of your brain?
No questions for me, but I do have some thoughts based off of the questions you provided earlier. But feel free to move on to.
Sure. So I guess my first question would be, um, from, from the council's perspective, what if any are the broad zoning issues in the town of East Long Meadow? Problems, priority areas, things like that. What are the broad, what are kind of from your perspective, the zoning issues that you're hearing and seeing?
Ralph?
No, I was just thinking, we have lots of wonderful bylaws written, but if you don't enforce them, they're not going to do anything for us. And that's a huge issue is enforcement. But that's not a, that's not something that you can control. But clearly that's what I see.
Well, actually, if I can jump in, I think it is something that you can control. We need bylaws that are written clearly and concisely so that they can be enforced. There's certain ones in here that you read. And even if you've been doing this for 20 years, you still shake your head and say, exactly what did we mean when we wrote that?
Right.
And with a turnover of counselors and planning board members, sometimes you lose the original reason for why that bylaw was written. And if they don't ask, you know, someone from the past, they have no clue and they look at it and go, well, this was dumb. Well, it wasn't. It was written for a specific purpose. Like keeping cars out of sight with a blue tarp.
There are always reasons why every section of a bylaw was put there. But like you said, over time, the, the minor ones, small sections, people lose track of why and who and what for. But if you dig back far enough, somebody knows, oh, that's because somebody wanted to do something in some property that we didn't want them to do.
That's true.
You know, those kinds of things. So we'll probably do some of that digging in East Long Meadow too.
Drive-ins.
Absolutely. And sometimes it is helpful just to have the question asked because, you know, sometimes you run into something and it's, well, well, it takes someone coming from the outside to say, well, why do you do it this way? Because that's just always been the way we've done it. Sometimes, so I think sometimes that's some of the value add we ask there too, where, you know, we see all the time, there'll be a way that something is written in a bylaw and it takes someone asking, why do you do it that way? To kind of, to, you know, kind of, uh, open up that door of kind of different possibilities. Anything else on that question? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I don't know when you would want me to respond necessarily because a lot of, I think the five questions you had, uh, sent to us earlier. I didn't necessarily put my answers all in one thought per each question. They kind of all blend across, across them.
Oh, go ahead. I mean, just.
Yeah.
All right. Thinking.
Yeah.
I think as you mentioned it from the outset, kind of with that first tract, I think a big one for me is like conformance to state federal law, regulations, court decisions, and even just consistency within our own bylaws, especially around definitions and how things. how things are described one way, but a different way somewhere else. There's a lot of ambiguity or things that are just outdated and maybe they could be applied in the past, but not in twenty twenty-five. I think another big topic is housing for me and at least evaluating ways that we could allow different kinds of housing choices in town, even beyond ADUs being sort of forced at the, the state level, but just other kinds of housing choice. So I think a big topic for me is we're, the amount of buildable land that East Long Meadow has compared to some other surrounding communities is dwindling. And I would hate to see us turn into, say, Long Meadow that has basically no developable land left. And therefore they're pretty capped at what they can do in their budget. I'd like to see us be a bit smarter about being more dense with the remaining lands that we have, so we're not constricting our growth that's going to happen no matter what we do zoning wise. And then some other random specific examples that I don't necessarily know what I would change about them, but I just know that there's some problems with them. Is like our sign by law. I think it's overly broad and restrictive, especially in the sense that it doesn't allow you to do murals. And I think forms of artwork should be permitted, but I don't know how to make that without saying you can't put a billboard in town either.
Everything's assigned.
Right.
Based on our definition.
Right.
And then I do think.
On purpose, I would imagine. Yes.
And then I do think we should at least, even if nothing changes, reevaluate the discussion around drive-throughs. I know it was the big topic during COVID when it was a lot of contradiction that, well, the banks can do it, but I can't do it for the pharmacy. I can't do it when I'm going to Dunkin' Donuts. And then some other topics, I guess they're just more questions that I have or are some of our zoning bylaws, like you said, too complicated or verbose and no one really understands what they mean? Do we have too many zones or not enough zones? Do other towns have things laid out differently? And are they better or are they just different for the sake of being different? And then I know our zoning bylaws also sort of prevent anything that's not explicitly listed. But I think it's hard for a community to predict the future in order to allow some of those things in a thoughtful way. So what other things do our bylaws not allow that we should consider that maybe you've had some experience with seeing elsewhere?
Sure. That makes sense. And this is.
And then it probably goes with my first point, but language modernization, like I'm sure some of the ways we describe things are maybe a bit outdated in their terminology.
I, I would, uh, just point out something that stuck in my mind when I was reading your by law. You have language in there about an institution for feeble people. I think that's probably been in your by law for many decades. Obviously that word's not been used for a very, very long time, but it's in your mind. So those are the things.
Legitimately.
You have to look.
We all understand it.
So that was the thing I was thinking of going to questions you had provided in no particular order.
No, that was very helpful.
Anyone have?
So I'll, I'll jump in real quick. Uh, you've already heard it from me. Um, but there's certain things like our districts. You know, we have a business district, a commercial district, industrial district. Um, I see in other towns where they have, uh, business one and business two and they identify it. Um, I'm not sure if that makes more sense rather than having a business and a commercial and people not knowing where to look. Um, I think it's, uh, a lot to do with organization of our, uh, bylaws. I mean, certain things pop out at me like we have a golf recreation district, which sounds wonderful, but a golf course is not required in that district. That doesn't seem to make sense to me. You know, the, the little things like that, that as you read and the more you read, the more come out.
Thank you, Ralph.
The other, if I can, other thing we're talking about is a center town district. And I just don't know in this process where getting something like that in would happen. I mean, the center town district could be out six months a year. It, it could happen quickly. We're not sure. So like I said, it's something that as we're looking at the zoning, we have to consider that we do want something like that.
And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Rebecca, we had just recently applied for and received a different grant or set of grants related to the development of some of that center town district stuff. So it may not necessarily be for this particular activity to incorporate that, but at least know that there's considerations around changing that and how that might end in with the overall review that you're doing.
Yeah, one of the things we, you know, we've already started on is what else is going on related to the zoning by law in the town, center town district.
It usually comes up.
You know, what is, what's just been adopted by the town and what? Um, so we need to understand that and timelines and what's the intent in doing this or doing that? And what, how does that fit in well or doesn't fit in with what we're doing? And like you just said, that might be sort of a, a future phase because, you know, you're going to be working on it longer than this project will be going on.
Yeah, but I will also say in, in specifically to the cent, to the center town district, we are working very closely with the director of planning on, on that. And he's keeping us and, and he's keeping us informed on his progress on that as well. So, so while, while that might not be a part of the process, we will definitely be taking that into consideration in the work, in the work we're doing and that something coming down the pipeline.
And I'll just add that if that, um, if number of substantive issues turns out to be rather small, you know, we could potentially utilize, um, this consultants group to, um, review whatever we're coming up with at whatever, you know, phase of development we're at. Um, but if there's a longer list of substantive issues, um, it'll probably stay off until, um, and, and we'll just work through the normal course of planning board and town council. Um, I still think getting some input will be helpful in terms of like best practices or considerations. Um, but depending on how many things you want to look at substantively, may decide whether or not we're going to include, uh, more or less comprehensive look at the center town district in, in this review.
Great. Any other thoughts?
So just, um, as I'm, I'm looking through, one of the thoughts that we had that, actually it's been years since it came up, um, was big box stores, retail. And then we actually adopted a specific by law to limit the size of retail space based on the fact that we didn't want a Home Depot or a Lowe's in town. Um, you'll also find, like I said, the no drive-throughs. Um, that was based on the fact that a McDonald's wanted to come in and the town was more concerned about all the trash from people driving through the drive-through and dumping it on the road on the way through. Um, so that's, that gives a little, uh, history as far as for the drive-throughs. So it's for consumable items. What we tried to base it on is food items. So Burger Kings, Wendy's, uh, McDonald's. They're not, uh, most of their, uh, business is done through the drive-through. And if they can't put a drive-through in, they don't come here. And that's been worn out and, um, obviously we don't have any. So the by law worked, but the thought process is now, well, is that outdated? Um, do we want something like that?
Chick-fil-A maybe.
I think, yeah, I, I mean, we might have to make a car. I, I agree with a lot of what Chris, especially on housing. Um, I think, you know, we're getting to a point where when a lot of these bylaws were created, we had just so much more land. And it's just the reality is we're going to have less and less and less of it as time goes by. And we were more farming community than like a Long Meadow. So we're, you know, getting closer to the point where sort of Long Meadow already is. Not like a specific proposal, but I think realizing how quickly technology is changing with AI, with different types of vehicles. I was in a driverless vehicle for the first time a few weeks ago, um, in Texas. So like trying to, I think, maybe not have specific proposals, but try to account for things that are coming up in the future that are going to be affecting our, you know, community, whether it's like, you know, we were talking about drones. You know, what, what's going to happen with maybe delivering things via drones? Do we as a community, I know obviously federal government, state government would have rules around that, but as a municipality here, would we have certain rules around that? So just being mindful of those big changes that I think are going to happen really fast. You know, in the few, next few weeks or few months, but you know, five, 10 years or less down the road. Um, and being mindful of that, of those changes.
Yeah, some of that's also catching up, uh, while you're looking to the future. I don't know if, uh, I haven't seen yet, but you know, does East Long Meadow have uh, regulations for electric vehicle chargers? Um, that's something that's getting adapted all over the place now by towns because they're coming. And, uh, and so different uses that we've all seen pop up in the last five years. You know, engineering, technology and all that that nobody ever heard of before. Uh, it's play, it's catch-up time. Um, so, uh, and then, and then trying to put our, you know, procrastinate our hats on and peer into the future. We'll take a shot at it and see what other towns are doing and, uh, you know, maybe present some options.
Yeah.
Any other?
I could go on for hours. Special, so.
Well, the final question I would have is what do you, is the, the timeline for the, the meetings or the deliverables that you'll have? Is that something that's going to be like next few weeks, next few months? Um, just to get a general idea of when our participation may be required.
Um, so I can say at least for the first deliverable, we're hoping to get that done in the next, in the next few weeks. And from, uh, from there for the other, for the public engagement and things we're working, uh, working to get those, to get those set up. And those will be following the next couple of, uh, you know, next couple of months from there. A lot of, a lot of the, the, um, a lot of the, as you can see from the handout, a lot of the public engagement is tied to having the diagnostic done. So once we're confident in that, that'll kind of set up scheduling some of those. So hopefully in that, and then we're talking, uh, next couple of months for a lot of these, for a lot of these things, but some of them will, you know, extend, extend over into the future.
I believe the first community meeting is tentatively scheduled for September eighteenth.
Oh, thank you, Bob. I'd forgotten about that.
Thursday night. It'd be a Thursday evening, uh, I believe, early evening probably, but, uh, we'll have more information on that once we, that's all confirmed. And, and the, the guy, the, um, the audit of the by law will be done a couple, like Will just said, a couple of weeks before that.
Great. Well, thank you both.
Sure.
Can I ask one question? I want to go back to something, um, uh, on about the, when this is kind of parallel, when you said, well, you prohibited drive-ins, so you haven't any fast food restaurants because they don't want to come in. But you also mentioned about the limitation on retail size. And I wondered if anybody has any knowledge, indication, uh, concern that that might have prevented some businesses from coming in that weren't big box stores, you know, Home Depot and Walmart, but it might've been somewhat larger than what your limitation is. If you've had any kind of reaction along those lines.
So I'll jump in, not to my knowledge. I was on the planning board for five years and my whole time on it. Um, we didn't have any, uh, large facility like that because it would have to have been exceptionally large. And I think one of our main things was we were looking at traffic conditions.
Right.
Especially along North Main Street and how much traffic a large facility like that would, uh, would be able to handle. And, uh, I mean, we've already got two large grocery stores. And to take a big box store or something really large and put it behind it, uh, would have been very, very difficult on the town.
Yeah, I was more asking not for a big box store, but for a smaller, much smaller store than a big box, but just slightly larger than what your limitation is now, is somewhat larger. Because there's, you know, there's small retailers and there's medium sized retailers and there's big, big box retailers and, and you know, um, it's always like you didn't get any drive-in fast food restaurants, which maybe people are supportive, but you know, what, what is the business atmosphere and is the town looking for an increase in businesses at all? Or what kind of businesses is the town looking to draw to town to provide jobs and increase tax revenue? I think that's a, that's kind of underlies some of the decisions that gets made on what gets put into or taken out of a zoning by law.
We, um, I, I think a lot of the issues have to do with the way our bylaws are currently written. Retail is not allowed in the industrial garden park, which is, you know, has larger parcels. Most of these uses are located along Shaker Road, North Main Street, and they're limited to how much space to be able to invite something larger than we have, but not as much as a big box store. We also lost a lawsuit with Lowe's back a number of years ago. I don't know if anybody remembers that. But Lowe's was supposed to go behind the Stop and Shop in that area. And when, when the plans were underway for the Lowe's coming in, there was some real um, discussion about restructuring North Main Street and the, the area approaching it. And then due to a technicality in terms of filing, East Long Meadow had the wrong date that Lowe's had. So ultimately Lowe's was, the courts gave them the permission to come to that area. However, there was no deal in place to change the infrastructure. So we couldn't handle it based on what we have right now. So that's a little history.
Sure. No, th- thank you. That, that type of history means, really means a lot to us in kind of our work and understanding where some of these bylaws come from and some of this, some of this work. Yeah. Okay. Um, and I think thi- this one, I, I think, I think the, the council's already touched a little bit on this, but just to make sure we're, 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 we're not missing anything. What, what do you hear is working with the town's current zoning by law and what is not working? And as an addendum to that, is there anything that you hear that you think as members of this community or as people that, um, you know, represent this community, are there things that are missing from the current zoning by law?
Um, I'm not sure how to say this, but a concern I have about how things revolving and maybe it's a generational thing. I've been around for a while and I know how our bylaws have protected us. And yet COVID changed things, you know, the town has been receptive to, um, allowing certain uses in the residential zone that were never allowed before under certain circumstances, which works in some areas, but other areas it's not enforced and it doesn't work. And I see, I mentioned this one other time, that I see a change in our residential zones in a way that we're, we're not just residential anymore. And I don't know if that's important, uh, or concern for the younger generations. I hate to date myself, but we've always looked, you know, taken pride in the fact that East Long Meadow, um, established the different zones, um, for, for good reason. And now we're, you know, things are changing and maybe that's not a huge deal anymore. But that's something that I don't want to see us lose our neighborhoods and our ability for, um, families to enjoy their property without having to deal with nuisance issues next door, that kind of thing.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
That's helpful. That's a good point. Thanks.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll see in the state. Oh, please go ahead.
Um, so one issue that seems to keep popping up is agriculture. Um, we have a lot of, um, homeowners with ten, fifteen, twenty thousand square foot parcels that want to keep, uh, farm animals, whether it be chickens, ducks and stuff. And we've sort of always allowed that without, without maybe the by law exactly saying that we could do it. Um, and I think that's something that we really need to look into and create, at least in my opinion. And I think that's something that we really need to look into and create, at least in my opinion, the ability. To allow this. Without opening a floodgate. It's a hard situation. We want farming in our town. We want people to be able to do this stuff, but we also don't want nuisance.
It goes, it goes back to the the number one problem that I think. Most people would echo Marilyn's sentiment is it's hard to enforce your bylaw. When nobody knows what to enforce.
Absolutely. No, that makes a lot, that that is an excellent other thing for us to kind of understand, so thank you for that. Anything else kind of on that question or should I move to the next?
Next is good.
Sure. So are there any uses or types of activities that the council has heard? That the community wants or needs, but are not being well-supported by the current zoning by law?
We have a restriction, I believe. We have a restriction in our bylaw for larger. Facilities, you know. For amusement or recreational. If there was some way we could have a bylaw that would address, I mean, we see uses coming out now where you. It's a, where you have soccer fields, you have indoor sports, it becomes a whole complex. Our bylaw supports such a use at the moment. We want to keep out the stadiums and hippodromes, that kind of stuff, so where is. The blend where we could perhaps invite something like that, and I would think that the industrial garden park is the only place where we could put it. Because of the, where the available land is, just a thought.
Good point.
I will, for for that, I can specifically say, I know one of my colleagues is. I actually helped the town out on the Cape with something similar, so that's something that we can absolutely, I can, I can touch base with her on that specifically too.
But if we have a bylaw like that, it might invite. A a person, I mean, obviously someone has to own the property and and. But at least if we, we create it, it might invite it.
Sure.
And I'm not necessarily sure what. What uses I'd be looking for, but I know. Obviously, post-COVID, we. Like, yeah, there's still some retail in town, but we have a lot of office space. And some of it has turned into like medical, like offices such, and those are still occupied, but like just the actual. People going to an office, like there's a lot of vacant space like that. In town, maybe not the entire building, but parts of those buildings are vacant. And I wonder what else could be allowed to not have so much wasted space.
Sure. Yeah, that makes, that makes a lot of sense. Anyone else have anything on that or? I would be, I would be happy to run into my last question because I know there's someone else after us as well, so I don't want to take up too much of the council's time. So what are, and I I think some of this is starting to come out in our earlier questions, but. What are the council's priorities for the zoning by law? And do any of you have any specific concerns or areas of critical importance? Related to the East Long Meadow by law that we should be keeping in mind as we're, as we're doing this?
I think for me, the summation is probably. Maybe more than some others on the council, I'm definitely open to, to change in some different things, but. By no means am I necessarily saying let's put skyscrapers in town or anything. It's like, how do we find balance between some different things and. Knowing that we're a suburb that's gonna keep growing, but not. Not be so restrictive that nothing looks different 20 years from now either.
Sure.
I think allowing growth in a smart way. That doesn't inadvertently shackle us to not being able to grow in the manner where we. Need to continue supporting the community, you know, having these services available to the public. And and just having bylaws that are easy to read, easy to comprehend for those folks and not being, I think, unnecessarily. Even if that wasn't obviously the intent, you know, that's not the intention when it's being written. But having clear cut, you know, things where government is not, tries to be not as intrusive as it needs to be.
Any other thoughts?
Just really quick, I like the fact that we have site plan review and special permit. I like the fact that we have appointed officials on our planning board. Who ultimately make the decision, who hear directly from citizens of our town. With a unique perspective, most of them have been residents for years and years and. And I think that gives us a better ability to understand what the public wants. And I'd hate to see something like that superseded by just department heads having. So much authority that they can override them.
Sure.
Support that, absolutely.
Anything else? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It's been very informative. Yeah, thank you all very much and please, you know, normally this would be the point where I hand out my card, but unfortunately we're virtually, but. Please, the planning director knows how to find us. Please feel free to get our contact from him if. Uh, if you, if if you have any questions and want to follow up on any of this.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, next under new business, we have approving Mass General Law Chapter 268A, Section 20D exemption. For Lynn Booth for a position of receptionist at the East Long Meadow Housing Authority. For a motion.
Make a motion to approve the Massachusetts General Law 268A, Section 20D exemption for Lynn Booth. Position of receptionist for East Long Meadow Housing Authority.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Jim?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
I mean, yes, Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Motion passes.
She's, she's in the audience.
Hi Lynn.
Thank you Lynn.
Okay, next under new business, we have reviewing the executive session minutes for release, so I have gone through. The spreadsheet of all of them that we had in the past that hadn't previously been released. And put together my recommendations after reading all of those minutes. So if there's no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the recommendations relative to the release of executive session minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Jim?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I mean, yes, Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you. Let's see, action items for next meeting.
I don't think there's any.
There really, there's nothing impending. Right after, of course, our first meeting on September 9th is the September 11th candlelight vigil at the Fire Department as usual. We tentatively had legislative update September 23rd, but knowing the legislator schedules, that'll probably push into sometime in. October or November again. So as of now, there's nothing like immediately on the docket that I know of. Unless some of these other discussions we've had tonight resurface with some more info.
I'm sure I'll have a full agenda for you.
I'm sure, yes.
It's quite a ways out, but I think it's worth noting that the EEA grant that you approved last month. Spec Dempsey is doing that reconceptualization of the center town and they'll be doing their. Presentation of deliverables on September 30th, Tuesday night in the auditorium. Part of that grant also requires a local match and we're matching that. And so I'll be leaving a book discussion group on Tuesdays at noon with lunch provided. Um, at the library on Jeff Speth's book, One Whole City. And then the library is hosting its own like book discussion group on the 24th.
Great, thank you Rebecca.
While we're gonna advance the speaker coming to.
Thank you. Unless anyone has anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion's been seconded to adjourn. Any other questions? Seeing none. Say aye. All in favor, please say aye.